The meeting is called to order at 7:01 PM. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second that the agenda of November 6, 2018 be approved as submitted? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda to include the proposed, or excuse me, the approval of minutes of October 23, 2018 as submitted? Acceptance of recommendations from the Committee on Special Education? Acceptance of recommendations from the Committee on Preschool Special Education? Acceptance of recommendations from the Superintendent for Personnel Changes? Request to approve the recommended bidder Energy Cooperative of America? Per the BOSI's cooperative bid for electricity? And request to approve the recommended bidder Armada Limited for a district-wide security audit and assessment? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. No Treacher's report? All right, special reports.
Sure, we have a couple of special reports this evening. And the first is our representatives from our ELA department here at PHS with some textbook requests. So I'll have you guys come up. If you'd like to introduce yourselves to the board and the public, that would be great. If you're getting situated, I'll just mention that our Director of Humanities, Kristin Williamson, is in the back, I think, with some signs to cheer for the English department here as she continues to support the work they do.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lisa Henry and I'm the Chair of the English Department. Sometimes you can do everything right and things will still go wrong. The key is to never stop doing right. This quote is from "The Hate U Give" by Angie Thomas. We're excited to add this book to our ninth grade curriculum. Published in 2017 and written by an African-American woman, this book has won several literary awards. Angie Thomas tells the story of Starr, a high school student who is the sole witness to a police shooting of a young black man. It describes her struggle with the situation as well as the impact on her community. This is a high-interest book to students. It's fast-paced and engages young readers while encouraging them to see complexity in a variety of issues, many of which are relevant to our times. This book is about families, about love, about pain, about standing up for what is right. We're excited to be able to bring some more diversity to our ninth grade curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jordan Garberino. I teach 10th, 11th, and 12th grade English at the high school. I have two books that I'm presenting today. One of them is All American Boys. It's a relatively new publication. It was published in 2015 by Jason Reynolds and Brendan Kiley. It features two main characters. Rashad is a young African-American boy who is the victim of an incident of police brutality. And Quinn is a young white male who is the witness to the incident. Rashad has to cope with what has happened to him and he also has to deal with becoming the face of a movement in his community as a result of it, where Quinn is challenged with coming to terms with what he's witnessed and recognizing this with his evolving understandings of race prejudice and his role in those in the community. It explores the themes and roles of, or explores the themes of the roles of the bystander and passive racism. Something that's kind of unique about it is that there are actually, so there are two narrators and each author wrote the perspectives for each narrator. So while you get obviously a unique perspective from each character on this incident coming from their distinct backgrounds, there's also a literary discussion to have about point-of-view and writing from certain perspectives. Overall, it's a highly engaging text. It's an excellent accessible discussion topic. It pairs really well with other texts that our students have read, like Between the World and Me by Ta-Nehisi Coates. And I think it would make a great addition to our curriculum. The other book that I have is Why Are All the Black Kids Sitting Together in the Cafeteria and Other Discussions on Race by Beverly Daniel Tatum. And Tatum is a psychologist and professor who teaches and presents on issues related to racial identity. And she describes the book as an answer to all of the questions she gets after that presentation, namely the title of the book, "Why Are All the Black Kids Sitting Together in the Cafeteria at My School?", and the question that inevitably follows it by the raised eyebrows, "And what do I do to solve that problem?". So it is, or it explores the development of racial identity through elementary adolescent and young adult lives and what contributes to that identity and how that identity translates into our interaction and existence in society. It's very academic, but it's incredibly accessible. And it actually aligns really well with previous initiatives with the district with bringing in the film, "I'm Not Racist, Am I?". Because it actually uses a lot of the same terminology having to do with systematic racism and the difference between that and bigotry and prejudice. And one of my favorite parts of the book was that it dealt with, how do you continue a conversation with someone who refuses to accept your definitions of those terms? Which was actually something that our students really struggled with, with trying to continue conversations after that film. So I think it's a really great tool for starting and maintaining conversations on an obviously difficult topic. And it branches into a lot of other discussions we have and related to the issue. I highly, highly recommend this book. It's actually specifically geared towards educators and I would really recommend it to anyone in the educational field to check this one out to begin with. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Jenny Strong and I teach 10th grade and 11th grade English. And I'm presenting two memoirs tonight. Both memoirs take place in other countries during times of change. So the first novel is Born a Crime: Stories from a South African Childhood. This is a memoir by Trevor Noah. It's very engaging to students who will recognize Trevor Noah as the host of The Daily Show. So high interest for students. And we will follow his account of his experiences growing up in South Africa during apartheid. So Noah asserts that language even more than color defines who you are to people. So he talks about taking on different personas to navigate different experiences. So he navigates the world of poverty, discrimination, and racism. Similarly, the other memoir is called Snow Falling in Spring by Moieng Lee. This takes place in China during the Cultural Revolution. She shares that she often felt like a sailor stranded in shallow water waiting day after day for the tide to rise and the wind to blow. So students will follow Lee's life and how she's impacted by the changes during the Cultural Revolution. And students will see that her dreams for the future stay intact despite the terrible things she undergoes. These memoirs will be part of a literary nonfiction unit. And they develop not only a student's skill at reading literary nonfiction, but they are supporting the 10th grade world history curriculum. So students will learn best by reading about people's experiences during these time periods and not just studying them in world history. We're recommending two memoirs because student choice increases student achievement and it increases, you know, their buy-in. So we have other memoirs, but we're trying to increase the choice. One novel offers the choice of a female Chinese protagonist and the other offers the choice of a male South African protagonist. So we're just trying to increase choice. So reading these memoirs will increase students' knowledge of other cultures as well as increase their own perspective and understanding of their own culture. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any questions or comments? Lisa?
Hi, good evening. I might have two questions. I'm curious about, because the books seem a little politically charged and a lot of adult concepts, so I'm curious about some of our students that may struggle with that. And as you mentioned, the film that we all saw that was brought into the older students, there was a lot of training that went, you know, in terms of facilitating discussions and how, I mean, how does that work for bringing in these, you know, kinds of materials? If you could speak to that, please.
Sure, I'd be happy to. First of all, the two books that Jordan mentioned are for our Mosaics elective. That is a course that is designed, that students choose to take as 10th, 11th, or 12th graders and they know it will be about literature of diversity. So this is a new course. It's the first year it's running, so we're just looking to start building some reading for that course. So I think any students in that course, and there's also a club that Jordan runs that's associated with it. "The Hate U Give", yes, it's politically charged. It's written by an African-American woman and the protagonist is a young African-American girl. We have no text in the ninth grade curriculum that even feature a young girl. We have no text in the ninth grade curriculum that are written by anyone else other than dead white men, I think. So, I think so. I'd have to double-check. But in the ninth grade curriculum, we like to offer teachers a big umbrella. And they choose approved texts from underneath that umbrella that serve the purpose with the units they're working on. So while we're all might be teaching the same skill, teachers would have the opportunity to gauge the interest level of their students and also if the students are mature enough to read it. But "The Hate U Give" actually is one of those books that kept disappearing from the library. Kids pass it around. It's very high-interest. And it's, it's well-done. I would encourage you to read it. And I think it's not presented necessarily as one side or the other, but I like the way it shows the complexity of situations. And I think that would be great for our kids to see a different diverse point of view. Would you guys like to add anything to that?
I think you said it all.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Well, yes.
The English department at PHS does great work, but I just, kudos to Jordan because at, well, a lot of these books I think of as Rock to Change, which the board knows about. That's our Student Summit on Race that takes place. So this idea of the Mosaics Club and the Mosaics Class really sort of bringing together a conversation. I think of, you referenced the film. And what we learned through that film is that adults have a hard time having these conversations and our students do not. So that really is sort of that next generation of students being able to talk about race in a much more open way than as adults we can. And you actually, at one of those Rock to Change events, you shared a book that is now in the curriculum. You just referenced, and I'm going to forget the name of it.
Why Are All the Black Kids Sitting Together?
No, the one that we, you, we got approved last year, the year before. Written by the-
Otahasi Coates.
Yes.
Ta-Nehisi Coates, yep.
Yep. And so, and so Jordan referenced it. I bought it on Amazon that day. Incredible book. So I've already written down a couple of these others that I will also be reading. So thank you very much for that. So not only do you extend our, expand our student minds, but you expand the superintendent's mind as I have, these are now on my, on my read list. So thank you.
All right, thank you.
Actually, we have two special reports tonight. And the second is our elementary principals will be presenting their school action plans. They've been working very hard on since the summer. And I will let them introduce themselves and they have a presentation for us.
Before intros, can I just comment on the picture? Is that picture awesome?
That is.
Well, there's a couple of us here. There's no questioning.
Yeah, I know. I noticed the comment.
Finish in that tournament. We won't put you on the spot tonight. Wouldn't you agree, John?
So for the, for the watching public, the photo is from the Sports Boosters Annual Golf Tournament, which our principals played in as a foursome. And, and I think the question is still out there on whether they, whether they beat some of our board members who were also playing, so.
Well, there was a home field, a home course advantage, so our handicap wasn't set properly. I don't think.
It's all about the foot wedge also.
That's right.
Did we digress a little?
Yes.
Hello? I'll go first just to introduce myself. I'm Mark Nelson, the principal at Harris Hill.
I'm Marc Stewart, the principal at Indian Landing.
Scott Hershler, Scribner Principal.
Steve Kenny, principal of Cobble's Elementary School. So I'm going to begin tonight and I would like to mention the picture. We put that on there on purpose, not necessarily to brag about our winnings, Mr. Piper, but it's, it's a metaphor for what we're trying to do as a district and elementary schools. And you see us almost in arm-in-arm in the picture. Not to gloat, but to represent our unity as we go forward. Our school action plans, you will see, and this is a couple of things on the first slide. I don't know if I have control over this or not. It is now. Thank you. What you will notice as you review each of our school action plans is that there are common elements that are in each of our plans. However, there is room as well for us to celebrate the cultures that we have at each of our buildings. So when we think about things like how we're creating a program that's consistent for all of our kids that go through the elementary schools at Penfield, we know we want to represent each of our buildings in our own unique way, but we also want to contribute to a K-12 program that allows each of our kids to have common experiences. And at the core of that experience is that, that quote that says, "All students belong to all of us." That's something that each and every one of us talk about all the time when we get together. And it's something that we believe in as we go forward with the Team Penfield mentality. But as we share, you will see commonalities, but you also see how we celebrate things a little differently in each of our buildings. And that's what makes us special, unique, but also unified in our approach to our elementary school students. I'll pass it over to Mr. Hershler.
Great, thank you. Okay, appreciate that, Steve. To piggyback on what Dr. Kenny was mentioning, first of all, we really appreciate the board for all your work in developing the board goals, but also having a consistency and maintaining what those goals are over the course of the last few years. That's allowed us to come closer together, being consistent, again, mentioning that Team Penfield model of what we're able to do collectively. It also helps out our students transferring from one school to another. Our shared staff as well know what to expect from each of our schools, again, also celebrating our autonomy. So some of the things we'll mention tonight as far as commonalities are, excuse me, ongoing implementation of the whole student. This is something we're very excited about, working as we have with the Children's Institute and Dr. Ginsberg most recently with instructional activities, academic excellence, and the whole student. In addition, our continued professional development focusing on RTI, technology integration, and also working with formative assessments. Continuing our programming for SEL curriculum, continuing also our three-through-five health curriculum and keyboarding in grades one through five. Also supporting implementation of our ELA mission and vision in which we are in Phase Three, looking at small group instruction, what is happening in the classroom regarding that, what are the resources that we can use to further develop that as well. And lastly, reviewing the district's elementary IST team process and resources, working with Scott Dreschler in special education and our mental health teams as well.
So I will go first as far as a school perspective. And again, just echoing what Mr. Hershler just talked about, the, thank you, the consistency. Writing a school action plan every year is, is a task that we all take very, very seriously. We start it very early in the process and we're making sure that we're in alignment. We continue to be in alignment. So your consistency helps drive those building, those building plans. And we really appreciate the fact that this year we're sharing how we're taking that whole student approach in each of the buildings. And you'll see some commonalities within all four of the buildings as we move forward. But at Harris Hill, we continue health education with a certified health education teacher that travels to all the buildings. What we've tried to do at Harris Hill is to reduce some of the administrative tasks for our mental health tasks to be able to facilitate more counseling groups, lunch bunch, freeing up our guidance, or our counselor, Mrs. Brolzmann, our psychologist, Mr. Hartman, to do some of that good work on the front end. Continue to, continue to work hard with our, with our character education programs and to spotlight the PBIS model, but to make sure that all students that demonstrate role-model behavior are recognized. And fifth graders at the elementary school are the leaders. And we talk to them about that. Fifth grader, the actions of the fifth graders matter. And so every Friday we go, I go into the, into the cafeteria and we tell a story of a student and how they are a role model. And it really is gaining momentum. The hound tickets I talked about last year, it's in the school action plan, really is a PBIS model. We are making sure that on, every two months, all the students that receive hound tickets for role-model behavior are recognized and then we invite parents in and we have a celebration for our top hounds. And some of you have been there, you've seen it. Our mascot shows up and it's really a great celebration of that whole child. Now, this is where these next two are, I really want to take a moment and talk about because at Harris Hill, we're a little different than the other buildings that are, seem to be bursting at the seams. We're not. We, we have space. And we've chosen to take an opportunity to explore different opportunities with that space, not to feel sorry for ourselves, but to see it as an opportunity. And so we were able to, I was able to manipulate the master schedule a little bit and to really work with the staff to think about, what does lunch and recess look like? And lunch and recess really looks like it did 1950s. We throw all the kids into a lunchroom and they kind of have at it. Well, there are kids that, that doesn't work. The noise level doesn't work. We, we see them struggle. And so we were able to manipulate the master schedule to allow students an opportunity to opt into a quiet area where they can, and the only really stipulation is that it's quiet. They can work, they can draw, they can do artwork, they can read. But we want it to be a place for introspection. We want it to be a place for quiet. We want the student that really struggles with that competing background noise to have an opportunity. Now, I've been charting the use of this and it's, it's really interesting to see. There are students that, I wouldn't say there's one student that has used it every day. We have students that use it a little bit more consistently than others, but there's times when students need breaks. And now they have an opportunity to, to do that. The second is on the other end of that, and that applies to both lunch and recess, not all grades, but most of the grades. Then the second one is, we took a classroom that was empty and we, and some of you came over and was, you were able to experience that. I thought it was a wonderful celebration at the Kinesthetic Movement Lab where we, we allow students either during the course of the day or during free time, or when, when teachers have some time and we have TAs available that they can go in and use this Kinesthetic Movement Lab. We started writing curriculum over the summer. We adapted classroom activities to this lab where students can utilize movement to learn basic, well, all, all content areas in math and language arts. It really is a, I invite you over to, to, to see it. It's exciting time. It's gaining more and more usage every day as we see new opportunities. It didn't happen overnight. We had Mary Beth Walker, I'll give her a shout-out. She was a wonderful resource in putting this together. Pam Stark, one of our physical education teachers, has really taken it under wing and all of the, I had a great teacher from each grade level come in and write curriculum. So it's off and running. And again, we're, we're trying to allow that student that needs extra movement and all that student that needs maybe a little bit quieter area to be able to have those opportunities during the course of the day, to change the environment of the student learning so that we can maximize what we're able to get out of the students. We continue to work on our behavioral RTI model. One of the things that also we're doing is I'm trying to find time in our special education teachers' schedule, and it's not easy, but to really, the executive functioning support of students. She, we, Laura Reynolds is the, the teacher that we're really trying this with. We've sent her to several different trainings and she really has become a wonderful resource for our building and going in as a sort of a tier-two behavioral support. Working with the teachers, co-teaching classes and, and teaching those strategies are vitally important to that executive functioning support that, and we are finding wonderful success with this model and so much so that she's gone over to just about, to all the other elementary schools. So we're trying to be progressive in, in our, in our practices and utilizing our space so that all the students have that, like I just said, that optimal learning experience. And then we're continuing to train teachers in the mindfulness practices and you'll hear that, I think, common in all of the buildings. Finally, you can't do this unless you focus on the adults in, in the schoolhouse as well. Really making concerted effort to not only do this with the students, but to make sure that I'm doing this and we're doing this as a, as a staff and a faculty this year that we're understanding, all of us need a different path and culture is so vitally important. And going back and really establishing those relationships that are so critically important to having a really healthy culture, just, you know, you need to do that. And it's a long relationship with the building principal at Harris Hill. I've been there a long time and a lot of those teachers have been with me. And so it was time to just recharge a little bit. And so we're really focusing on that in our faculty meetings. I'll answer questions later, but that's Harris Hill. Up next is Dr. Kenny.
Okay, here we go. Oops, wrong way.
Wrong way.
Or not?
Well, we'll just do Harris Hill all night.
No, we will not. Thank you. So at Cobble's Elementary School, we have really thought about what are the ways that we want to encourage our kids to be positive members of the school community and increase their understanding of what it means to show patriot pride. And that's a, a character ed program that we rolled out last year. And it basically is asking kids, what's it mean every day to show the pillars that are in place here in Penfield? So as a building, we talked about what are, how do we educate kids on what it means to show each of these pillars? So we transitioned many of our character ed programs to be more about education and giving kids opportunities to experience what it means to show those pillars. So each of our character ed assemblies now have transitioned from just recognizing individual students for showing those characteristics, which is still a good practice, to having kids and staff talk about what does it mean to show caring? So for example, at our most recent character ed assembly, we had students and kids elaborate and share out to their colleagues and to their fellow classmates about what does it mean to show caring? What's it mean to them? And we will do the same thing for each of our character education assemblies. In addition to that, we really wanted to be proactive and use a PBIS model and recognize kids when they're showing those pillars. So this year in particular, we have a new program where kids, and you can see the logo that's in the upper right-hand corner, that's Cobble's new logo. When kids are showing these behaviors, classroom teachers are giving kids stickers and saying, "Go home and talk to your mom, you were showing caring today." And the kids are walking out of school every day very proud to be wearing their stickers because they are, they're showing the, the expectations that we have in our five pillars. So we continue to refine that program, refining that it's really benefiting us as well as students. And we're really excited about that. In addition to that, part of a parent component that we've built, that we built last year and we will continue is the Patriot Promise Books, which is a homeschool connection program where we send home books, they're K-2 books and three, five books, where kids will sit down, read the book with their parents. And each of the books has a message about showing character and typically aligns to one of the pillars. And everyone in the building has a chance to bring those books home and have a conversation with their parents about the different pillar that the book represents or connects to, and have a conversation about showing the characteristics that are mentioned either through the characters or in the moral of the story. So this most recent school year, we sent a book home that was reminiscent of Wonder. It was a K-2 picture book and kids brought, have been bringing that home. And then for our three, five students, we've sent in, we're sending home a book called The Three Questions, which is based on a Tolstoy works, Tolstoy story, and, which is pretty heavy for most kids, but the, the point of the story is to be mindful, which connects into one of our later practices, which is mindfulness. which is mindfulness. And at Cobble's, we've been pursuing mindfulness Mondays. Every Monday, we get on the announcements and we have a mindfulness moment. We teach kids about what it means to be mindful, show mindfulness in their day-to-day experiences at school. And then the first Monday of every month, new this year, we invite classrooms down and we model and demonstrate a couple mindfulness practices, whether it's belly breaths or certain yoga poses. And so we typically have a cafeteria full of kids on Monday morning where Mondays are sometimes tough for our kids as well as maybe our staff, where we can just take a quick moment to gather ourselves and prepare ourselves for the week. So that's been pretty cool. Last couple pieces are, we're really looking for ways to increase our staff's understanding, similar to Harris Hill, about SEL practices and engage them in SEL learning. We've been sort of talking about and reflecting on the Ginsberg experience as a faculty and what our takeaway is for that. And then lastly, we're extending our health education lessons for the second year. Okay. That's my presentation, so I'm handing it off to Mrs. Ware.
There we go. Good evening. I'm going to echo a lot of what you've already heard because as we started off by saying there's a lot more that we have in common than different. So I'm going to really kind of zero in on the things that I think we're doing specifically at Indian Landing. Once again, we do have designated times for morning meeting and closing circle. That was something we built into our master schedule last year and we're working to continue and strengthen those times in terms of resources for teachers and how they use that time. But every day in kindergarten through second grade starts off with what I like to call a soft landing. Kids come in, there's a chance, time for them to greet one another, do some sharing. Sometimes it's a collaborative activity. It might be a song. There usually is an academic connection. I happened to be in a kindergarten classroom this morning where it was, rather than traditional show and tell, each student had to bring an object that fit in with either the letter C or the sound c or the letter O, and then they were doing a sort. And those are their super kids letters that they've learned. So those times are really important to just getting the day started. Our shared decision-making committee, also known as Partners in Learning, we've taken on, there's so much to be done in terms of social emotional learning and it encompasses so many things, that we decided this year that we would break up into subcommittees. The team still all meets at the same time, but we've broken our committee up into smaller partners with a specific focus. And then we spend the last 10 minutes of our meeting reporting out and sharing. We felt like that would allow us to accomplish more with specific groups zeroing in on specific needs. So we have four subcommittees, Social Emotional Learning, which is really looking to what are the things we need to teach our students? What are those lessons we want our students? What's that language we want to use with students? Climate Environment, which was referenced by Mr. Nelson in terms of what does our visual environment say to students? What's the feeling of the building? How are we reinforcing our expectations with the things we have on the walls? Positive Behavior Support, that's something we've had in place, but we're continuing, and I'll get into some specifics with that. And then Special Events, what are the things we're doing, the bigger things, the celebrations, the things that we do that bring all of this learning together? Our Green Days are our RTI light days. Every school has a different day. At Indian Landing, they're Green Days where we have less RTI time and kids spend more time in the classes, are in their homeroom class. But what that also does is it frees up some adults. So that's really our day for collaboration in terms of grade level teams, to meet with other departments, and that integration, whether it's mental health teams, the librarian, the enrichment provider, reading specialist. So those collaboration opportunities are not only focused on academics, but they are focused on the behavioral well-being of our students. Partners Pride School Lessons. Partners Pride Assemblies are our once-a-month school assemblies where we recognize our students of the month, celebrate all those students who got Partners Pride tickets throughout the year. We have shifted away from doing a Word of the Month, which is something that was done previously, and we focused more on a theme for the year. And our year is focusing on just being your best self, your social emotional well-being. And we have different themes each month. So last week, when we did our assembly, it was on friendship. And Ms. Greeno, our school counselor, and Mr. Seaman, our music teacher, did some role plays. We had videos. We actually, it took a little bit of coordination. We did have students sit with cross-grade level buddies. So normally, we have kindergartners in front, then first grade, second grade. We mix them up so that younger students were with older students so they could turn and talk. We really, it's hard to teach a full lesson to 500 kids all at once, but we're looking for creative ways to make that happen. And we've now established every classroom has a cross-grade level buddy. Those lessons, again, the next one will focus on the zones of regulation, trying to build that common language and strategies for students. And then we look at how does, what we do with students, how does our environment support those lessons that we're presenting to everyone? The consistent language for positive behavior support, it's be a partner, again, focused on the district's character traits and the pillars. Our kid-friendly words for are be responsible, be safe, be respectful, be kind. You ask any student in Indian Landing, what does it mean to be a partner? And they can tell you those four things. Excuse me. Digging into that subcommittee work with positive behavior support, we are looking at analyzing our behavior referrals and really trying to dig in from an RTI perspective of what specific interventions do we need for students who, all of these wonderful things are not enough. There's something else going on. What can we do to support them? So we're really trying to look from a data perspective as well as the information we collect from teachers. And what do we need to do as a school? Are we seeing more referrals on Fridays before vacation? Are most of our referrals coming from the bus? Yes. You know, the locations, but really looking, rather than just what we think is happening, digging into that information. One of the most exciting things we have going on in terms of SEL learning is Simon. Mr. Nelson, every time I've tweeted a picture of Simon, I get a text from him that says, "I love that dog." Because he's got a dog just like it at home. We love Simon. Thank you so much for your support of the pilot program this year. This has been a dream of our school counselor, Ms. Greeno. She put a lot of work into it, a lot of thought. We continue to do so. I had a conversation with Mr. Pfeiffer today about, you know, what are we going to be looking for in terms of measuring the success of this program? What are the things that we've seen happening so far? Mrs. Dean heard about it at the PTO meeting last week, the ways we're using him. So he just makes you happy when you're in the building, but there are targeted things he's working on with specific students as well as small groups. But if you haven't met him yet, I encourage you to come over. He's just the cutest thing. And he had a bow tie on and got his school picture taken. Our school-wide community service projects, we continue, every year, our students vote on an organization that they would like to focus their efforts on. So we do things throughout the year where we raise funds. This year, they voted to support Ronald McDonald House. So our first big school-wide event was actually more of the staff organizing it for families, our pancake breakfast. But we will do other things throughout the year to support Ronald McDonald House, so that's what the students selected. We're also looking to shift our field day, which has always had a very athletic, competitive emphasis. Our PE teachers did an outstanding job organizing events and games, but we're looking to have it be just a piece of it being athletic and doing some more that maybe is community-minded, creative, so we're really touching upon all students, not just kids, not just running around all day, because that's hard for some kids. So we're looking to turn that into a fun day in June. More to come on that one. And our staff are engaged in a book study, Engagement by Design, using a book that really is the focus of our faculty meeting work. That's a book that does touch upon instructional components, but focuses on the relationships and how important that is to learning. And then again, health education is continuing in grades three through five. And one thing that's not up there is we also have, two of our teachers, our psychologist and our ENL teacher, who are leading mindfulness exercises and meditation in classrooms. And they have a schedule and they're going into several classrooms. That got missed up there. Thank you.
I'm actually going to step in for Mr. Herschler. So I'll go ahead and review some of the things that Scribner's doing, and you'll hear a lot of commonalities as we go through them. Scribner's character education program focuses on the idea of Scribner kids who care. So I know that Mr. Herschler and his building have been, continue to perpetuate and promote this component of the character ed piece. And this is something that they continue to build on through a variety of different programs. They have lunch bunches with teachers to occur at all grade levels. And that's just another way for us to reach out and make relationships with kids. Mr. Herschler is definitely leading that charge with his staff. They continue to have the kindergarten and fifth grade buddies mentoring program, so similar to what Marcy was discussing. Any opportunity that schools have to reach out and have older kids be mentors for younger kids pays off greatly for our school cultures. Mr. Herschler is having bi-weekly meetings with his mental health staff and the behavioral RTI staff members. The kids, many kids are coming to us with very different experiences and it takes a variety of professionals to figure out what are the best methods to address the needs of kids. So the Scribner staff continues to work around that. We continue, all elementary schools are continuing with the health education program, and that's something that's also happening at Scribner. Scribner does a variety of school-wide community service projects and celebrations. Those are things that happen throughout the school year and typically they happen by month, but there are a variety of themes to those. Mindfulness continues to be a common thread. Scribner is also incorporating mindfulness training and practices in the classrooms as well as throughout the whole building. And there's some work being done by the Scribner staff to increase awareness about how to create a psychologically safe environment for students as well as classroom teachers and any member of the school community that comes in and is part of the schools. And there's a continuation of our Only One U program, which is teaching lifelong lessons and expressing the importance of diversity with student population. And last but not least, there's a continuation of the District-wide Buddy Olympics. That's something that not only Scribner does, but all elementary schools, and it is an amazing event. And I know that Mr. Herschler is one of the individuals who champions that program and has been there for many years to keep that program running and build on its success. So I am going to pass this on to Marcy. Are you doing Goal Two?
I am. So normally, when we come to you each year, what you've heard us talk about in the past was Goal Two and our partnerships, where we highlighted the partnerships that we have. So this year, the focus is on what we were doing for social emotional learning under board goal number one. But Goal Two has not gone away and that those partnerships are very much connected to the work of goal number one in terms of the social emotional learning. Many of the things that we all do, we each have some of our own personal ones, but things that we all have in common, you can see in front of you listed up here. I think one of the most important ones is that consistent professional development. Kristin Williamson, Nicole Whitehead have been wonderful in organizing our teachers and the opportunities. It's a nightmare to plan for in terms of subs, but when a full grade level across the district can come together to talk about curriculum and to have conversations, there's nothing like it. So I, you know, commend, it's a lot of work to pull that together, but it definitely has a lasting impact. And that's a perfect example of the partnerships. And again, just special things we try to do with our other buildings. The graduation walk happens each June as well as community partnerships that we each have with different organizations throughout the community. So those partnerships, although we didn't detail them for you this evening, they are still alive and well and very, very, very strong.
We're not going to bring up the kickball game.
Not.
Okay, there's...
Moving on.
Okay.
Can you hit the, thank you. I'm going to wrap it up. And goal number three, around fiscal responsibility, even though we do not discount this. This is paramount to us. We work with Dr. Sansucci, the superintendent of schools, and with you to set fiscally responsible goals, to make sure that we are spending our money in the most prudent ways, that we are combining resources whenever possible, we're using BOSIs whenever possible. And we're always, we understand the tax cap, we understand the parameters that we're under. We want the absolute best for our students, but we understand that we have to be fiscally responsible. And so we're always on the lookout every budget year, right, Dr. Sansucci? Every budget year, we're looking for, where can we make those trims that don't affect students? That's always a driving parameter. So we'll continue to work with you and support that at all four of the buildings. And then just to wrap it up, I want to commend, and I think it doesn't get talked about enough, but Jim Pfeiffer and the curriculum work that has been done. A few superintendents before you, Dr. Putnam, we had an interim superintendent, he pulled me aside, and this was many years ago, but he said, "You know what? Penfield isn't really a school district. It's a district of schools. And they're so vastly different in what they're able to offer students. It's not that way anymore. We can look our public in the eye and say, whatever school we go to, we're getting that sound educational experience. The pedagogy associated with instructional programs that are paramount to that success." And I really do give you a lot of credit, Kristin Williamson and Nicole, for pulling that together over the last five years. We are grateful for the work that...
She's still here.
Oh, okay. We're grateful because it has pulled us together. We can celebrate our cultures, but we can look, any parent that comes from Scribner or over to Harris Hill, or from Harris Hill over to Indian Landing, and we can look them in the eye and say, "You know what? We're doing the same things here. The curriculum is the same." We have work to do. We still have work to do. We understand that. But we are so far advanced from even five years ago that we are talking about common assessments and we are looking each other in the eye and saying, "This is a really solid direction that we need to move." So I'm grateful to you and I'm grateful to Jim's office for the leadership that has been expressed over the last five years. And with that, we're going to close and take questions, right, Dr. Putnam?
All right. Board members, any questions, comments for this wonderful presentation? Mark? I saw you first, Mark. Go ahead.
Sorry, John.
Well, I think, of course, this is probably one of the most important presentations, I think, of the year because this is the foundation. You know, the kids start with you guys and then they continue on. And what's really interesting is how much of your plan is tied to that social emotional learning and the whole student. And it's not just the first time, it's not the first year this is going on. So what I'm kind of curious about is, as you've been doing this for a couple of years, what are you seeing when you observe the kids? What are you seeing in terms of their behavior changes, their social interaction? And then also, are you getting feedback from the parents based upon, if that's a result of your school plans and how you're focusing on the students?
I'll go ahead and start to answer that question. Let me begin the answer by saying, we have wonderful kids who attend our schools, absolutely wonderful and very supportive parents. But like everything else, the world is changing so quickly around us as well as in education that I think, year after year, we're finding that kids are coming with some different experiences and different needs. And the SEL learning is allowing us to look at kids through some different lenses rather than the standard academic piece, which was, it's an important part, but we're realizing that if we just look at students through that lens, we're missing a big part of them. More and more, we're finding that kids are coming with some different needs that we have to be a little bit more creative, but more importantly, well-informed about what are the SEL practices that are necessary for us to address their needs. Similarly, I think parents are coming to us to help answer some of their questions about what's going on with their kids and how we can best help them. So what we're finding is that there are pockets of kids in each building that need something a little different. And many times, that is an SEL component that we need to think creatively about or really lean on one another as colleagues and really lean on some of our more intuitive and specialized personnel in the buildings to make sure that we're getting that whole student and all of their needs addressed. So it's an interesting journey. I think it's an important one for us to wrap our arms around because we are at the front lines and in many cases, we're the first group or first people that are helping the kids that have something just a little different going on as well as the parents. So the whole student and the SEL is very timely because there are portions of kids that are coming to us with different needs. I don't know if my colleagues want to jump in.
No, I'm good. That was good.
Yeah, thank you.
John?
You know, I was thinking when you were mentioning, I was thinking that, Mark, when you were mentioning about the school district with different schools. And I think this presentation, my first year on the board, in which probably Dr. Sansucci, you and I were the only ones that were there, that's what I heard. And it's just great to see this change over time and, you know, and to have it continue because it's very positive to see that. And if you could have seen it, you know, eight, nine years ago, as you alluded to it, you wouldn't recognize it. In relation to SEL, I just want to mention, this may or may not tie into it, but, you know, last week, we had an incident in our neighborhood near the Indian Landing... know, last week we had an incident in our neighborhood near the Indian Landing on Halloween. And, you know, an unfortunate incident, kind of a pyrrhic event, but that night and the following nights, the parents that I ran into couldn't have spoken more highly of the reaction of the district in a positive manner and Marcy of your staff in regard to that because, you know, and since then, I mean, with the kids. So there's been, I just wanted to offer that that was great support. And that's one of the things I think maybe you forget about in your presentations is there is a neighborhood component to what you do that's very important. So I just wanted to mention that.
Anyone else? You know, yeah, oh, go ahead.
If I sit too long without talking, you know I need to say something. I just want to say, you know, thank you to the team, the elementary principals. I think have just done an incredible job and continue to do an incredible job. If you walk in, and I'm lucky to be able to stop at any time to the four elementary schools, and you walk in and it's caring, it's compassion, it's social and emotional learning through and through, it's happy students and happy staff. And we all have adults and students' bad days. We all are, including all of us, that we are not the 100% person we want to be, but there is nothing like starting your day at any one of our four elementary schools. And, you know, my office staff knows that if I have too many meetings with adults, I'm starting my day at one of the four elementary schools. And it's just great and it's really, you can see the shifts and the changes and that team piece isn't lost. It really is. When they're able to text with each other and talk with each other and share ideas, that's really where that team piece comes into play and it only gets better from there. So I just really commend you. I know this portion and putting the school action plan together and then this presentation is just a little teeny percentage of the work that goes in every single day. And I can't help but share that as a parent in our district and speaking to parents in our district, they absolutely love their elementary schools and it's because of the leadership that's there. So thank you very much for all that you do.
Yes.
I appreciate Mr. Nelson's comments around the work of our office and the directors do work very hard and have been working very hard. The teachers deserve a lot of that credit as well because they are buying into that process of consistency. But also, I have to really turn it right back to the principals because without their buy-in into consistency and into the work that we're doing, it doesn't happen. It doesn't get implemented at the building level and then the teachers aren't buying in as well. So it really isn't, it's not any one place that deserves the credit. It's really a vertical effort right from our office into the classroom, into the building level administration because everybody's got to buy into the process in order for it to be successful. So the kudos need to be shared, but thank you. I appreciate it and so do the directors.
That's one of the things I know I've mentioned many times is about the collaboration. And I think that's something that's pretty special out here in our district. There really is a concerted effort to work together and identify the uniqueness, but to absolutely see the commonalities and to work together for the sake of the students, which is always our focus. And that focus is so obvious. So, you know, I just wanted to reiterate and, yeah, you know, that kind of thing. So thank you so much for coming out tonight. This is, this is a lot of work to put this together for us, but it really paints us a great picture and gives all of us that opportunity to take in kind of that bigger picture. So we appreciate it. We know it's a lot of work and we don't want you to think that, you know, that we take that lightly because we don't.
Thank you.
So thank you, all of you.
Thank you very much.
So that concludes our special reports.
Okay. What's that, huh? And so no visitors tonight, right? Okay. Levia. Hi there.
Hello. Okay, so for today's report, at Harris Hill, there were a few third graders who composed their own songs to thank soldiers for Veterans Day this upcoming weekend. There was a school-wide Halloween parade and Fall Harvest Bingo on Halloween night with prizes and treats. At Cobble's, there are a handful of second graders took a field trip to the Rundle Library and the Rochester Public Market. At Indian Landing, students prepared for projects and presentations for a celebration for veterans on Thursday. Fourth graders wrote realistic fiction pieces with inspirational messages, sharing them at a book release party with families and friends. At Scribner, students were tumbling, climbing, balancing, and even stumbling in the gymnastics unit in gym, which was always my favorite unit. At Bay Trail, students experimented with dry ice and bioluminescence in living environment classes, and they made sushi in the home and careers classes. At PHS, many student athletes qualified for states in many sports, including girls' tennis, girl's swimming, and boys' cross country. Penfield High School won the most school spirit in Rochester and we held a pep rally at 6:30 in the morning for the students to appear on the news. It was fun, but it was very early. And that is my report. Thank you.
Yeah. How was that? Were you there, Levia?
I was. Yeah, it was fun. It was, it really woke you up.
Yeah.
In the morning. They did give us some coffee and tickets for bagels during the day.
Oh, wow. That was pretty, that was pretty wonderful. I think that's just great. Mark, awesome. Did Barb get there? Was she able to get there? Yeah, yep. Wow. Oh, my gosh. Wow. Really?
Yeah.
Well, okay. At least there was the effort. Well, before we let Levia go, are there any questions or comments for her? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we have superintendent's reports.
All right. So this evening, I just have some student and staff honors. I'll also be talking briefly about our building emergency response plans. And then I'll turn it over to Dr. Sansucci, who will be talking about the initial review of our budget goals, assumption, and guidelines, as we lovingly call it, the gags internally. So just a few great kudos. So National Honor Society, I believe John Piper was there representing the board. And this is our fall induction. And we had 12 students who were inducted into the National Honor Society here at PHS and those names are there and in the agenda. We're very proud of those students for the hard work. Golden Apple Award, which actually was just aired on Channel Eight this evening before this meeting, and it'll be up on the web shortly, and we'll make sure I'll get that out to the board members. But congratulations to PHS Spanish teacher Kevin Marriott, who was presented with the Channel Eight's Golden Apple Award for being an outstanding teacher. And you may recall Kevin, he's been here to present on Spanish textbooks and you can see the energy, enthusiasm, and excitement. And I will just share that was unique because the student who, who's pictured here, the student who actually put him in for Golden Apple is not in his class, but is in his study hall, but witnessed how he works with students who are coming in during study hall to get help and was very impressed with that. And I just think that goes a long way for a student to take those steps because of something she saw outside necessarily of the traditional classroom. So Kevin was very surprised. And thank you to Jim Pfeifer because Dr. Maloney was with most of the board at NISBA when this happened and he was great to come over and surprise Mr. Marriott. Hoxton Youth Orchestra, we've got some students here pictured who are being selected as members of the 2018-19 Hoxton Youth Orchestra. I'll tell you, just be honest with you, that five years ago, I had no idea what an honor this is. Now that I have a couple of young students who, in my own household, who play instruments, I realize just how difficult this is when we present this. This is really sort of the cream of the crop of youth orchestra here in the area and across the state. So really exciting. And we also have the area all-state music festival. So congratulations to 26 Bay Trail students and 16 senior high students who have been selected to participate in this year's all-state music festival. I won't read all of their names during the agenda, but I will point out maybe the last name in the senior high school list, which is our very own Levia. So thank you very much and congratulations. That's one of the perks of being here is I am going to mention you by name. And as she mentioned, Penfield did win the Who Has the Most School Spirit Award. And what's kind of neat is that Penfield not only won, but won with nearly 50% of the vote. So it really was a landslide and the award was presented to Dr. Maloney and the students who were able to wake up a little extra early to get in here. And it was a lot of, a lot of fun. I knew that we had good board representation, so I was not here at 6:30 in the morning, but it was really nice to see that crowd of students. Very exciting.
I love it.
Just a couple of other updates around staff. Is again, really excited that the following Penfield Library Media Specialist applied for and received mini-grants from Monroe One BOSIs this school year. A lot of work to put in for those grants, but some really cool things that are happening at our elementary school libraries. Sue Chauncey at Scribner was awarded a $700 grant, a $700 grant to purchase 14 Ozabots. And Ozabots offer students opportunities to learn about programming, communication, following directions, and giving complete and clear directions to others. If you follow Harris Hill on Twitter or the library at Harris Hill Twitter, you can see them. She posts about the work that they do, but a lot of tech integration happening in an area that you might not think off the top of your head is where it's happening, which is in the library and that tech integration. And it's really very, very cool. And Nancy Logi from Indian Landing received a grant for $1,150 to attend Building the Future of Social Studies, which is the National Council for Social Studies Annual Conference, being held November 30th to December 2nd, which is great because one of the things the board may or may not know is that our Library Media Specialists, while they are always supporting students and helping them select texts and teaching them around tech strategies and how to find solid sources online, they're also on a regular basis partnering with teachers in order to co-teach and help plan and help support the classroom instruction. And so her being able to go to the Social Studies Conference and be able to bring back some incredible ideas to continue that integration at our elementary school level at Indian Landing. That's it for my kudos for our staff and students. And I can transition into just two slides on our building emergency response plans. So as a reminder for the board, way back in July 2018, when it was really, really warm and hot and we were all saying how stressful it was that it was so hot, and now it's going to snow on Monday.
Snow day.
You approved, you approved. I gotta hang out of that snow day a little longer, a little longer. So...
I just thought, I might have to know if you were paying attention there.
All right, Monday, we're good. You know what? Monday, I will officially announce now will be counted as a snow day because it's Veterans Day and there's no school. So please enjoy it and enjoy the snow. So back in July, the board, you approve the district emergency response plan. So this can just be, there's a lot of response plans and emergency plans. So you have to approve the district plan, which is required every single year. But the district is also required to complete and update building-specific emergency response plans on a yearly basis. And we submit them to the New York State Safe Schools. So these plans have to also be formally adopted by the Board of Education. So each building updates their emergency response plan and they send that to the district safety coordinator, which is our very own Alan McNiff. And through an online process through the New York State Education Department Business Portal, we're required to update and submit specific information from our building emergency response plans. And that was required to submit on October 15th. So while they've been submitted, we also would like the board to acknowledge that through approval tonight. It's important to...
I'm sorry, I got...
Yeah.
You already approved it.
You approved, this is where you approve the district response plan. These are now six individual school response plans. And so each building updated their response plan. The only changes to these plans were around the staff directory. So we had a changeover in staff. And because we had a changeover in staff, we also had some minor changes to who sits on the building emergency response team, which we love acronyms, so we refer to as BERT. The BERT teams, each building has a BERT team. So all this information is required to be put on the portal and submitted per their requirements. It's one of those things that while the board approves it, it has to happen, but we do like to get that board approval, which will be later in this evening. And then we also provide copies of the building emergency response plans to local law enforcement, the Monroe County Sheriff's Office, and the Brighton Police because of Indian Landing. And then the final requirement is that the board does have to adopt those plans once they're up. The only changes that were made again were to staff names because of all the work Alan McNiff and the building principals did last year to really solidify those plans. As a reminder too, for the board and the public, those are not completely accessible for the security and safety reason. We don't put everything up online. We do have to submit certain things. We're able to retract some in order to make sure that we still keep some confidential information. The plan is there, we know the plan, the buildings know the plans, but we don't want to put that out on the open web for people to be able to misuse. Questions besides Lisa's around the building-level response plans?
Board members? Okay.
And now I'll turn it over to Dr. Sansucci for our goals, assumptions, and guidelines.
Our gags.
Our gags.
Thank you. This is the 20, the 1920 version of this, so we're beginning planning. We've been, we have been in the early stages of planning for our 1920 budget. This is a sort of the first, one of the early formal and one of, really one of the most important steps in that process. So the board has a long history of establishing early in the board process goals. What you want to see happen generally as the budget's designed to support the instructional program, assumptions about what might happen in our environment, about what might happen in state aid and around the state and in terms of the things that could impact our budget. And then finally, some guidelines that the board provides, knowing those goals, with an eye on those assumptions, how should we move forward in our planning process? So we always begin and this is the first time, I think we'll see it in this budget cycle, but you know you'll see it in every budget presentation as we move through because we do always key off of the board's goals. Those of academic achievement and excellence, partnerships, fiscal responsibility. It makes sense that they're the first goals we look at in our goals, assumptions, and guidelines because as you heard earlier tonight, the instructional program is taking its lead from these. The work that's being done in the buildings by teachers, administrators, by the district office is intended to be in alignment with these goals. So everything should follow from that. We want to talk a little bit about instruction and even here, particularly as we look forward. So I'm going to ask Jim to just touch base on some of the important things that we need to keep in mind as we move into the budget cycle.
Just a little bit, a little bit about instruction. As we think about the first goal of, you know, growth toward academic achievement and excellence and the development of the whole student, you know, one of the most public measures of progress toward that goal is our students' performance on state assessments, be it the three-through-eight assessments or Regents exams. When we talk about the three-through-eight assessments, those are aligned to and driven by the New York State Learning Standards. So just kind of to review and take a step back and look at where we've been in recent history because that has a lot to do with where we're going and what the state has planned for us. So thinking back to, you know, it doesn't seem that all along ago because it wasn't. 2013 was the first year where we looked at three-through-eight assessments aligned to the Common Core learning standards. And it's difficult sometimes. We might bash New York State because we have yet to see a cohort of students have their 13-year time in a school district with one set of learning standards. But some of that is due to the responsiveness of New York State and changing standards that we didn't feel were appropriate. So we have to keep that in mind when we think about that. But so you can see a little bit of history here on this slide that I'm not going to read to everyone because really we want to get into where are we going now? And we think about most recently, last year, I will talk about in 2000, spring of 2018, we had CBT, computer-based testing for mathematics, as an option that we engaged in for our students three-through-eight. We outsourced scoring for our three-through-eight math and ELA assessments to kind of recoup some instructional time and take advantage of cost savings in a co-surable service through BOSIs. It was also the first year of a transition exam in the Regents' Global History and Geography. So our efforts in terms of aligning to new frameworks and social studies expectations at the high school level. Coming this spring, we'll continue with computer-based testing in math, three... So our efforts in terms of aligning to new frameworks and social studies expectations at the high school level. Coming this spring, we'll continue with computer-based testing in math, three through eight, and where our plan is to layer on ELA in grades six through eight, but still do paper-based assessments in grades three through five ELA. We'll continue with outsourcing the scoring to take advantage of that opportunity. And we'll have a new global history and geography two Regents exam in 10th grade. So that'll be a new, a completely new Regents exam. From there, we have to begin working and it's important for us to really look at that long-term because when we say, well, these assessments, we won't see these assessments for three, four, five, six years, we need to start working now with some of these students and laying the foundation in the earlier grade levels so that they are prepared by the time they get to that grade level to engage in that curriculum and be prepared to be successful in the, the assessments and thereafter. So I want to share with the board where we're headed. So in 2029, 2020, that's where New York State is projecting that we'll be fully aligned to the newly adopted next generation learning standards for ELA and mathematics and potentially be fully operational with computer-based testing in both ELA and mathematics, three through eight. In 2021, we'll be moving to transitional exams for grades five and eight science. That is a shift. Right now, the elementary science assessment is in fourth grade. They want to shift that to fifth grade. There'll be a transition exam there as well as in earth science and living environment. So we need to start the curricular shifts for students well before that, really starting next year in some cases, with next year's sixth graders, seventh graders, and eighth graders to prepare them for these assessments. We'll also be looking at a new, potentially a new U.S. history Regents exam in 2021. And in 2022, new science exams, not the transition exam, but an actual new exam in grades five and eight. And then, I lost some of my, my piece here. And then new exams or transition exams in science for earth science, continuing those, I'm sorry, for living environment and earth science. Those will be three-year transitions until we get to potentially new assessments. 2021, you can see the new exams there. Those will be new. And moving forward, we'll continue to roll until we get to Regents exams in chemistry and physics being transitional and then moving into new Regents exams in 2024. Again, we need to lay that foundation really beginning in the next couple of years as our K-12 Stadia and Steering Committee starts to look at curricular models and, and then we'll break down into grade levels and departments and plan instructional units to start phasing those in over the next three years so that our students are ready when those Regents exams come. So, you know, you've seen this graphic before around the insured focus on learning and what I talked about at Leadership Summit this year and, and really kicking off the school year is that this will no longer be an initiative, but a way that we do business. And so as we're preparing students for new assessments, as we're integrating new learning standards, these elements will need to be addressed so that we can ensure that our students are as prepared as possible for success on those measures. But another big focus that we know is coming forward and that I've integrated into the next is, is our work around social emotional learning. And as I'm referring to it here, really in weaving in social emotional health and well-being. It is about learning, but we really want to ensure as best we can the health, social emotional health and well-being of our students through integrating those social emotional practices into our instructional model. And so looking at how are the, how are we building those, those practices into curricula? How are teachers building them into lesson plans? How are we building them into our assessment practices and our response to intervention practices so that we're, we're incorporating that all the way through? That's going to take some time and some effort as the board has heard and the public has heard, we're looking in the process of building a three to five-year action plan to, to get us to where we need to be in that regard. So that's going to take some time and the work will truly begin once we have a plan in place by the end of this year, implementing that plan and, and moving forward with those action steps beginning next year. And there certainly will be a budget impact associated with that.
And, and as we move forward, we'll focus, of course, on, as you heard Jim say, it's really about planning. A budget is a planning document and it's the financial expression of that instructional program. So needs are, needs are endless and resources are limited, so it's really about balance. It's about balancing the needs of our students, maintaining our programs and, and while we always have an eye on minimizing the impact on, on taxpayers. So we'll begin with some of the, the assumptions that we're going to, that, that we'll need to have an eye on as we move into the process. So enrollment's growing. I don't think that's a surprise at this point to anybody, but it will continue to grow at about the same pace that it did for this year. So we'll, you'll have a, a full enrollment report at the next board meeting. It was scheduled for, for tonight and the, earlier on in our, our budget process, but I'm still waiting for some BERT data from New York State. So we moved it back to the next, to the next meeting. But I do have the shorter terms done. So enrollment will grow by about 1%. It's going to be mostly at the elementary schools. It'll be fairly stable as, you know, bigger classes are moving through. But as they're moving through, the changes from grade level to grade level at the middle and the high school aren't going to be dramatic. So it'll be pretty stable enrollments there, but we should be up about 6% overall over the course of the next six years. So we're growing, but we have some limitations on growth of our revenue streams. So the big one here, of course, is the tax cap. It depends on these three factors. So the, the key one really that, that is going to have an impact as we move forward is the rate of inflation. Last year, the rate was about 2.13%. We don't know what it will be for the rest of this year, but it's already above 2.13%. It's trending around 2.2, 2.3 right now. I don't see any reason that that's going to decrease. And as you know, the way the tax cap is designed is what our levy is allowed to grow is 2% or the rate of inflation, whichever is less. So you can see in the two rightmost columns in years when, recently when the rate of inflation was, you know, 1.4, 1.6%, 0.4%, that's what we used. Now that we're going to, now that we're going to move into a period of higher inflation, we'll be using 2%. Our costs aren't capped by the tax cap. Our costs will increase based on the rate of inflation. It'll have an impact on, over time, on, on wages. It'll have an impact over time on the cost of goods, but our, the growth of our levy will be capped. The other piece is the tax-based growth factor. This is the, the growth of real property in the community where there's a, a component of the formula that allows us to take credit for that. It increases the cap a little bit based on the, that growth of, of new construction, of new bricks and mortar in the community. And it, for us, it's been running about a half percent. You can see there's every now and then a sort of a burst of activity as some new major development or, or some major piece of construction comes online. But for the most part, it's about a half a percent. And that's what we're using in our projections as we move for, forward. So this is really just a graphic representation of what the, of what that tax cap factor will be. And we're anticipating it to really be capped at, at 2% as I indicated. Last year, after we went through the formula with all the adjustments, all the things that get cooked into that formula, our maximum levy, our cap, our 2% was 2.75%. We adopted a levy at 2.6, so we adopted a levy underneath the cap. And this year, we don't know how that's going to turn out yet, but I think it's reasonable to expect. And what I'm projecting based on what we know is that our cap will probably be around 2.5%. That inflation's going to be around 2, 3, and, and we'll move forward with that, with that set of assumptions. Included in this is we don't anticipate any mandate relief. You'll recall that when the tax cap was adopted, it was adopted hand in hand with a promise that yes, you know, New York State is limiting the potential for growth in revenue, but we're going to take many burdens off of you as we move forward. And, and that has, has not proved to be possible. I think this slide will probably have the most to do with our financial picture as we move forward into this and future, the near future of, of budgets in New York State. And it's happening right now. Right now, the, the Assembly is dominated by, by Democrats by, and that caucus, the Democratic Assembly Caucus is predominantly downstate. There's a lot of New York City Democratic representation in the Assembly. The Senate has for the last several years been Republican. That is posed to change. The Republican majority in the Senate is, as you know, a razor-thin majority. And there's every chance that a few key races this year could change that. That will have an impact over time on the focus of state aid and the way state aid is distributed in, in New York State. I don't know how that is going to pan out because certainly upstate Democrats are going to advocate for their, you know, for their, for their, for their constituents. But I do think it's reasonable to expect that we'll see a, a change in focus, the, you know, the, a change in focus towards the city. The city has, city schools for many years have believed that they are underfunded relative to their needs and to what they were, have been promised in a number of court cases. It'll just change the conversation so, and perhaps not to our benefit. So we'll need to pay attention on that level. The overall, that's, that's, that, that's important because of the distribution of state aid. How much gets distributed is also very important, right? And, and this year, certainly we, we know that the governor, in all likelihood, will be re-elected tonight. He will, we know that in election years, in lead-up to election years, it tends to be, state aid tends to be more generous. And we also know that there's a structural deficit built into the New York State budget. So next year could be a very interesting year with the cap on, on state and local tax deductions at the federal level, potentially constraining revenue growth in New York, the built-in deficit, a change in the distribution of power in the, in the state Assembly and Senate. It, it could just, it, it's difficult to project, but it could be, but it will be consequential as, as we move throughout the, through the budget cycle. And I think potentially limiting top state districts. I think the, as they start to par up, I think the potential at least exists for those regional shares to change a little bit and move away potentially from upstate. So we'll have to pay attention to that as we move. And that's, you know, your opinion of what will happen there is, is easily as good as mine. We do know that in this atmosphere of revenue limitations, that major structural changes in the state aid formulas are probably unlikely. They eliminated gap elimination, the gap elimination adjustment in 16, 17, but foundation aid's been frozen. So I redesigned this graph just a little bit this year to put those two pieces together just to give everyone a sense of, of really what that history has looked like. The blue bar is what we should get in foundation aid if the formula were allowed to run the way it was designed. The green bar is what we receive. And the red bars, the pointing down red bars are the, are the gap elimination adjustment years. When not only did we not get what we were promised, there was a takeback. So the sum of those over the course of this graph is $65 million. It's on, for Penn Field, which is somewhat amazing. It's unlikely that they're going, certainly there will never be payback of gap elimination adjustment. That was just necessary to balance the state's books in those dire fiscal times. But I think it's going to be difficult to move forward with even paring up the foundation aid, which has become sort of the focus of, of lobbying and of efforts in, in advocacy at the state level. Excuse me. There is good news for this year on the expense side. ERS rates are going to go down a little bit. Remember there, and this makes sense if you think about it, they're tied to performance of the stock market. Stock market's been doing fine for a while. It uses a five-year rolling average. So the calendar and the stock market have helped us. So the calendar, as we've built up some years of decent stock market performance and, and moved away from the truly bad years, have begun to fall off, fall out of the average. And, and it's reflected in the rates. So we're down slightly. TRS rates haven't been released, but their performance was decent. So I would expect it to be at least flat. We'll see. We'll know more about that perhaps by the next board meeting. Health insurance is going to increase by 1% to 10.9% depending on plan. But value, the plan that the vast majority of our contracts are keyed to, will increase by 1%. So value and select, the two by far most common plans for all of our employees are at 1% of increase. As you know, that's a dramatically lower rate than what we're used to seeing. The rate of inflation for medical services is around nine or 10%. You would expect it, that to, than we've gotten used to, seeing increases of, of sort of in the, the eight and 9% range for health insurance costs. What's going on here is the change to self-insured status for the RASH plan. So our, our, the, the, the insurance plan that we all participate in, that we have, that we cooperate with, with all of the other Monroe County school districts, moved to self-insurance. As a result of that, the, the, our old insured plan was obligated to pay about seven and a half or eight million dollars in taxes that support the Obamacare initiative. Those taxes are not applied to self-insured plans. So the move from an insured plan to the self-insured plan saved seven and a half million dollars. The, the rules that you know about of medical inflation, the increasing costs, increasing usage and all that haven't been repealed. So we'll see next year a return to a more normal rate increase. But for this year, at least, I think we can take, sort of, we can take some credit, I guess, or, or we can enjoy a lower-than-usual rate because of all the work and, and the hard work that went into that, that went into that plan change. Insurance rates for employees over 65 are also going to remain approximately the same. So insurance costs, a major driver in our budget, be much, will be much more restrained this year, along with retirement costs. So with that, our guidelines have been that staffing levels will be monitored and part of our discussion as we move throughout the budget. We always begin our process, and we'll talk more about this at enrollment projection time, but we'll begin our planning with four sections of, of kindergarten at each of the elementary schools. We monitor that and adjust that as we move along depending on what we see happening. We'll continue the process of presenting secondary classes with less than 15 students to the board as we keep an eye on and do some work on, some, some further work on our required staffing levels and, and ensure that any changes, any reductions that we might make will minimize the impact on, on students in the classroom. You've heard a lot about long-range planning tonight. It's, it's woven into really all the presentations that you've heard tonight and, and honestly that you almost always hear. We've had a longstanding practice of a five-year look at the budget. We'll continue that because that allows us, that planning allows us to set up for and, and manage through changes. So hopefully, you know, our forecasts as we get far out into the future are always wrong. You know, the future's a murky place, but we adjust as we move along. We keep looking out and it allows us to be foresightful in the decisions that we make. And, and our goal there always is to, to reflect the current fiscal realities, what's happening today, balance the needs of our students with the needs of our taxpayers while we do the responsible thing and maintain our, the excellence of our programs and our facilities. With that, I'm back to budget calendar just a little bit. At the next meeting, you'll approve, hopefully we'll have one more review of these. We may have ERS rates by then. We'll review the enrollment projections. One more piece of planning work, we'll look at the tax cap and some budget forecasting, look at reserve levels in December, and then we're into the budget. So we'll work our way through the budget, through the months of January and February. By March, we really need to, at the March 25th, by then we will have a complete budget. We'll review the entire budget along with state aid or depends on the, what our anticipated state is. We won't have final state aid until April 1st. With that, our deadline for budget petitions and for board candidates, April 22nd, and we need to approve and adopt that budget then at that meeting on April 23rd. April twenty-third, uh, in order to make our advertising deadlines and our required submissions, uh, for the May seventh public hearing and for the May twenty-first vote, which will be at the high school, um, from six to nine P.M. Are there any questions?
Board members? John?
Good presentation. I like, I like this.
Thank you.
This may be geared towards Jim, but last, our last meeting, we had the, the roster of classes with less than fifteen students. At what point, it's a balance obviously between instruction and budgeting, at what point do we consolidate those into, um, less than two or three classes?
That's really at the discretion of the board, so I don't know if it would be consolidated. Our practice has been, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that the board reviews those and really gives us guidance toward, okay, those are okay to continue to do that, or you want us to change our practice and, and consolidate or have fewer of them in certain ways, or have more conversation about why they are the way they are. It really hasn't been the practice to see them and then change them in current year 'cause that would obviously have a big impact in terms of student schedules and staffing and things like that now. But it usually, we would get any guidance for changes for the coming school year and, and what you would want to see as a board there. So I don't know what the format is, I'd have to look at Dr. Bob's, when you folks would be able to have that discussion, if that would be part of a workshop or something of that nature, and then give us that, that direction for planning for next year.
We do have a workshop sched, tentatively scheduled for January twenty-second. Um, it could be part of that conversation. I can say from where I sit that that list through the years has shrunk. Um, and I think it's important for the board probably to have some conversation about it, to understand, um, what the, um, you know, what's driving some of those. 'Cause some of those courses are combined, you know, that it's, they're taught, it's a separate course taught in the same classroom at the same time. You know, those nuances, I think, are easy to lose, so.
So would the, in, I think in June or July, we have our retreat, we'll call it, right?
Yep.
Is that too late in the, in the year? Well, that's the beginning, that would be the beginning of the year, but.
So it'd be, it would be, uh, so a little bit of history with, especially at the high school. Um, starting next month, students begin selecting their courses. So it's really around January, um, by the end of January is where students actually are working with their counselors to select their courses for the following school year. So looking in June to say, we're not going to offer these because there's less than fifteen, it's definitely possible. It just means, uh, it worked to try to find, uh, students in another class. I think one of the great pieces over the last four or five years as I've been here is that sharing that with the board is an opportunity to, to not look at the current year, because any change there, we, we already have contractual obligations to hire a teacher for like one point oh, and to say, you're not teaching that class, we now have nothing else to offer, so that doesn't quite, um, that's not fiscally responsible.
Right.
But it, it can inform us, and it does, on what do we offer the following year. And one of the things in Penfield, if you've ever looked at our course description, um, selection process, we offer a lot. So we definitely at the, at the high school level where students have a lot more electives to choose from, and they change over time. So environmental science and forensics used to be classes that people just went to in droves. It was something that excited students. Over time, it's not anymore, and instead they're looking at, for example, the high school, they're starting to look at physics to focus it around, offering another class around optics, because the number of students in physics is increasing. Optics has a Rochester connection. And then where we see a lot of those numbers that are less than fifteen are in classes like our, uh, technology courses. And so when we toured the school and we take a look and look at woodworking and plastics and, um, metalwork, you, it's going to be harder to get more than fifteen kids in that class, but without offering a course like that, students have nowhere else to go, nowhere else to turn. So it's not a, a perfect system. I agree with Mark, both as this role and as being the high school principal. Each year we try to limit, you try to make that number smaller. And I think this is a great workshop topic, because one of the things we've, we have found is that if we say, okay, no classes under fifteen, that's, that is a zero tolerance policy for classes above fifteen, when those classes are taken out, those students need to go somewhere else, which all of a sudden we now have class sizes increasing in other electives, because, because it can't be a free period, it has to be another course typically. So, um, the other thing to always remember is some of those classes that are under fifteen, the course being offered has more, but the way the schedule works, one class might have twenty-five and the other one might have twelve. Um, but if you put them together, it's too big to have in one classroom and you can't split them up completely evenly so that they're, that they each have the same amount over fifteen. So there's a lot of sort of nuances that add into it, but, uh, please know from the board and for the community, the high school administration and the counseling team are looking at those on a regular basis, because they, that doesn't maximize their staff if they're offering classes with less than fifteen. They also have at the high school level, much different than elementary, 'cause you can't drop third grade, um, you, you are in. Um, in the middle school, there's not as many electives, there's some changes you can make, but at the high school, they do have a two-week drop-add period where, where students can, may get into a class and realize, this isn't for me. Um, years ago, that drop-add used to start on the first day of school, just like college. There was a line around the corner of the counseling office, and for two weeks to counselors, all they did was drop-add. Over the years, we've stopped that, there's no changes for two weeks. We tend to find that students, once they actually stick it out for a couple of weeks, remember why they signed up for that class, they're less worried about what their friends are doing. Um, but after that two weeks, we allow, um, some dropping and adding with parent support and parent conversation, and that's where all of a sudden a class that might have had twenty-two, all of a sudden has thirteen because of some changes.
So it's pretty variable.
It is variable. The other piece too is around our math classes. So I, I use math as an example. We have extended program, which is just additional support and extra lab at high school math. Students might be in the non-extended course, sort of the at-grade level with no additional support, and after five weeks, they realize in, and, uh, working with their teacher, that they need additional support. And so one class section may get smaller, but another one is getting larger, because we're purposely moving students to make sure that they get the most support. But, um, so honestly, that's why we share it with the board, because ultimately that your feedback, any ideas you have are all can be brought back to the high school administration in regards to the best way to limit the classes under fifteen.
Or promote them, maybe.
Yes. It, we're what?
Promote them, instead of.
Yes.
Flip it around, just say, can we promote these classes that are, you know, have been historically offered, but.
Yeah, and there, there is a lot, so that's where I look at it, maybe it is a workshop, workshop topic to bring in, um, you know, Dr. Maloney from the high school, or the, um, maybe the department chair of counseling, Ms. Dana, to talk about what they're doing to try to encourage students to take those classes. But we've always felt at the high school that there really should be some student choice there. And so, you know, I will be honest with you, there are schools, when they take a look at their budget, say, we're going to offer less electives. We're gonna, we're going to, to take away that choice, because I can make sure that if I only offer English twelve, then I can put twenty-five kids in every class. As you saw tonight, we offer a litany of English electives for twelfth graders, and that allows that choice, so they get something that they're really interested in and hopefully can, can help them. So it's not a perfect system, but ultimately, uh, maybe a conversation in a workshop setting to talk about what courses are, are, uh, historically low. And I think that's a great piece to mention, if we look at hit, the historical trend of those classes under fifteen, I mentioned environmental science, it's, it's not offered anymore. Green technologies was a course the technology department put together, sounds great, especially in this world of sustainability. Nobody signed up for it, we, we remove it from the course description guide. We give it a couple of years, and if no one's signing up for it.
Right.
We take it away as even a choice. And just as a reminder too, all the, you only see the classes that are under fifteen after the school year starts. So when they're under fifteen in the spring and over the summer, the counselors are calling all those students in to say, you can't take this class because it's not going to run. So that might be interesting data to look at too in the workshop, is which courses in June were under fifteen that aren't running at all, because there's not enough students in the class to run it. So that might, that might help too, because it's, it's, um, you know, there are classes that never make it to that list, because they were cut and canceled for the year back in, um, back in the, in the spring and early summer.
Tom, uh, the one other piece is with some of those students and their sequences that are required for their diplomas, if, you know, they're planning and all of a sudden they get to their senior year, and that they need a particular course for, to fulfill a sequence, and, and we pull it, that has a potential impact on students, so that's just one more factor.
And that one that falls in a lot is Loeb.
Yep.
You know, Loeb, uh, it falls in a lot in terms of, um, you know, French, and as you get higher up in the French, um, courses, uh, historically our numbers get smaller, but there's nowhere else for those students to go. You also see that in mathematics, where you get really sort of the very high-level math classes, where, where if we didn't run it, there's no other course for that student to go into. So for senior year math, they, we wouldn't have another math class for them to, to necessarily take at that level. So it's, I always see it as two areas. Both are really high-achieving students, because there's not as many to get into those classes, and are students who may need some more hands-on type classes, but aren't necessarily, don't have, built in their schedule that they can go off to EMCC at Bosse's for, for two years, and trying to find a balance of, um, limiting classes that are taught with less than fifteen, but also making sure that we don't, um, hurt a student's opportunity to, to walk across that stage because of a sequence they might need.
Oh, that's great, thanks. Because, I mean, last year it was, we'll review it, and then, um, so we review it, and I just wanted more info, so.
Yeah.
There's a lot of moving parts to this.
Absolutely, and I think it's the, the workshop piece might, and, and I don't know if I can pull that data, I'm sure we could probably look into, ever since Symphony Campus, is, I wonder if we could look at which classes were historically under fifteen that we no longer offer be, because of that.
Thanks.
Does that help a little bit?
Yeah.
I think, I think it's a continued conversation.
Yeah, no, that's great, I appreciate it.
The board does have a role in that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Wait, we're, we're not done yet, are we?
No.
No.
We are done, that, uh, this is where I get to say, and that concludes superintendent reports for the evening.
Okay. Trying to see where we are here.
Yeah, we're down.
We're down to number seven, oh, five. Oh, the approval, okay. All right. Did you want to, do you, do you need some time to plug in or anything?
Oh, oh, go ahead.
Okay, 'cause we went over our, um, building emergency response plan, um, well, the presentation for it, and we're about ready to approve it, so I didn't know if you want to.
I'll hold it.
Well, I don't know, does she need to?
She doesn't need her computer.
Yeah, because, I mean, you, it was in the packet.
Right.
So you're familiar with it, I'm just trying to catch up here and, and I didn't know if you wanted to, like, sign in and all that, but we're, we're ready to move on. Board members on the agenda were at number five, or, yes, for, um, facilities there. Every school district is required by NYCRR, section one fifty-five point seventeen, to have building-specific emergency response plans to ensure the safety and health of children and staff, as well as to ensure integration coordination with similar emergency planning at the municipal, county, and state levels. The building-level safety plans are amended annually to include updates with new staff names and roles, as well as other relevant contact information. The building emergency response plans have been updated and submitted to New York State, the Monroe County Sheriff's Office, and the Brighton Police Department. May I have a motion and a second, that the building emergency response plan amendments described above be approved?
Sure, moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. So our committee meetings, labor relations, Barb and Lisa, you sent out, wait.
I did.
Yeah. Did you want to, did you want to say anything about the meeting, you or Lisa, either one of you?
Um, I can say something, if, um, since Lisa said it last time. Um, it, it was a very, um, interesting presentation about the, um, Supreme Court, uh, the Janus decision.
Oh, right.
And how, uh, Linda Vakas, how do you say?
What is it?
Okay.
Barb, can you speak to Janus' room?
Yeah, what, what about it?
Just what is the, what, what's the topic of it?
Um, it's about, yes.
Unions, okay.
Union dues, right.
That's right, if you're not in it or.
Right, okay. And Linda did a, a very, very, I thought thorough presentation on, on how she interpreted, uh, what the Supreme Court handed down, and how it's going to impact for negotiations.
Okay.
And for, um, teachers' unions going forward.
Okay.
It was a nice overview. Um, it was, it was not, um, I think, anything that was not understood, I mean, the majority, there were a lot of questions asked, um, by.
So you were able to cover a lot of it?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. But it was, it was an interesting, um, being a retired teacher and knowing that there were some of my colleagues that fought that for a long, long time, and now it's, it's, um, it's, it's finally come to fruition. So we'll see what's going to happen going forward.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you. Okay. NISBA convention, um, so, yes.
Can I just go back to the?
Yes.
School Boards Association?
Yeah.
Um, the mentoring committee is going to have, uh, its second program on, for presidents and superintendents, November twenty-eighth.
Yes. A symposium.
Um, and then the, um, December Albany trip is, I think, the first Monday in December.
Is it Monday, or is it, is it Monday?
Did you get that?
Okay, it's the Monday, okay.
Sharon, so.
It's in December, but I don't know.
I don't know if you were asked to respond on that, but we should let Sharon know if any of us are going. I'm going to go.
Hold a flyer, I haven't received a flyer yet in my email.
I think it came out, but you could, you could check. Um, and then, um, next week, some of us have been asked to be on a panel for your conference, the Board Clerks Conference, which I'm not sure what my role is yet, but I'm going to learn that tomorrow.
Nice.
Um, hopefully board's behaving the right way for clerks, but, um, and I think that's it.
Okay. So for NISBA, I know, uh, most of you went to NISBA. We decided this year as a board that the officers this year were going to go to the national, and the rest of the group who could and want, you know, were able, went to the NISBA conference. And then, um, we thought that because of time constraints, we would in-depth discuss what, everything that you all wanted to share at our next workshop, and then I was thinking about that, it's like, in the future, we should consider the conference in, in, uh, correlation with our first workshop, because it just, you know, I mean, we had things that we had to work through with this past workshop that we did, but we should keep that in mind for the future, because the next one's in January. And, um, you know, I know there's a lot to share, John, you sent out your notes, that was, I appreciated that, and then anybody who wanted to do that, you certainly can, but in the past, we've done that, and it's been helpful to get a little more in-depth with everything that you've learned, what you walked away, you know, your takeaways and whatnot, and in this forum, it's a little, um, you know, it's time-consuming on a night like tonight, when we've had a lot of, um, other, you know, in-depth conversations. So, um, however, if there's anything now, just a quick recap that anybody, or a quick insight that you want to share now in this forum, we have time for that, and then we'll go more in-depth at our workshop. Barb?
I guess because I'm so late coming, I'm the one who's going to be talking the most now, but I wanted, the biggest thing that, um, I wanted to share, uh, before January was I went to, um, every, the presentation about the musical, the board, um, uh, your board meeting, the musical, and in the past, how they've done things, this was for, um, you know, people for scenarios, and they do best practices. Well, it was all done as a musical.
Oh, my gosh.
It was the most entertaining and amazing. It was the most entertaining and amazing presentation, and it was written up in the board docs as the, very similar to what I experienced.
Oh, wow, yeah.
And it was, I was like, "Oh, okay, I get that." So there was song, there was no dancing, but there was song. It was really well-done, really well-done.
Wow, very nice.
Superintendent, I'd just like to let you know, I am ready whenever this board wants to run these meetings as a musical.
Okay. Oh, my gosh.
All right. Lovey, I don't know if you're ready, but.
So, right. The only thing they did not bring up, and Bill reminds me, they did not talk about when one of the board members really is passionate about a project and how it keeps getting turned away. So perhaps we could address that as musical. Rooftop gardens.
I can start working on lyrics now.
The musical, right? There you go. Somehow, I think they're going to be the same, whether in song form or. That's awesome. That's great. Thank you so much.
Anybody else? Lisa? Yes, with the resolution.
Yes.
Yes, congratulations on that.
First of all, I have the privilege to, to introduce the presentation that Leslie and Nancy did. So it was standing room only.
Oh, wow.
It was really, I think, well-received. I had other people, am I on? Hey, I'm on. Hello? I gotta get close, I gotta sit closer.
You can bend it down.
Oh, okay. But I had people come and talk to me afterwards about the presentation, so I think they all did a great job. I got to, because you're only supposed to have two speakers, but I announced everybody, and I just think that, I just think it was awesome.
Yeah, I think that was quite a feather.
It's, it's in the onboard magazine, and that I, so just so you know, because that goes to board members, superintendent, district office, I did send a copy over to the high school staff that presented, so they can see their name in the onboard. And, and just to share, you know, there's, those presentations turn over quickly. They had another room, they had to use a room for the next presentation, so I sort of felt good that they had to send like the third-tier people in to throw us out of the room because there were so many people.
I tried to throw them out like three times.
So many people who had questions. What I realized, and I think the board members, thank you for being there to show support to the team, is that things like school culture and the absolute tragic conversation that we're continuing to try to take the stigma away from the conversation around suicide, is that after a presentation like that, you realize just how much of an impact it has on school districts across New York State, obviously nationally, but this was the New York State School Board Association. And so the number of superintendents, board members who came up who had very similar stories and said that they wished they had done things differently, and how they dealt with the public, and, and it was just really, they learned a lot, I think, and it's an unfortunate thing that we had to go through. But again, we started this meeting with the elementary principals talking about team, and, and really, it showcased, you know, the team spirit of both the, the board being supportive along the way, and, and every administrator, every teacher, every staff member coming together to find a way to, to make, find the positive, to move forward in a really difficult time. So that came across, and Lisa did a wonderful job presenting the, the speakers then, and I think it was great that it was a Penfield board member who could sort of do that. It really sort of hit at home, and I appreciate that.
That's great. It was great. It was really well-done. And there was a lot of more mental health-focused presentations. There was a lot that were full this year. But that was the venue, I guess, anyway. But they actually said at the business meeting that that was the most attendance ever, so I'm guessing that probably had something to do with things being full. But the business meeting was interesting because that was my first time. It's kind of scary a little bit, but, but it was okay. And it was short, right?
Extremely short.
Comparatively, because that was my first go-around, but we were done by, I don't know, 11:30, right?
Wow.
Something like that. So we got our amendment passed. Nobody really said much, so that was awesome. And then everything else, there was a lot of talk about the, the one about school safety and gun control, but there was a lot of support for the amended version that we talked about that kind of narrowed more in about the school. And then, what else did I want to say? The kindergarten, the kindergarten, the one about kindergarten.
Mandatory kindergarten.
Yes, that got, I voted no, like we had talked about, but that passed. And then one of the resolutions that was not recommended, they, the school district came back, the one about cultural competency. So at first, it was talking about diversity in hiring, and then it sort of shifted and really talked about cultural competency as a NISBA initiative and looking at training just across, you know, for school boards and superintendents and what that looks like. And a lot of people spoke to that, and then that ended up passing. So, but I thought it was well-written when they came back.
Yeah, I think they, there was, they were able to address the concerns of the resolution committee and still keep the, really the essence of what they were looking for. And then, again, the concern was, it was mandating districts to do something. And, you know, that's, we talk about unfunded mandates from the state. The NISBA is very careful about not creating our own unfunded mandates. So that's really, it wasn't the, it wasn't the sentiment that was objectionable, it was the mandate.
Right.
And they wrote it to, to maintain the sentiment and eliminate the mandate. And I'll just say about the mandatory kindergarten, I think there was a lot of, you know, that is, the way it was written, I think, is a little bit ambiguous, and we'll see, you know, NISBA has good understanding what the, what the intent is versus what the wording is. It almost, it's almost written as if we're advocating that every, that there must be, kids must attend kindergarten, every kid, every time. That's, when you look at the discussion, it was really more about if you offer it, then kids must attend it. And it's, it's, so it's a little bit nuanced.
Yeah.
I think, I think they'll take care of it. On the whole, a lot of the things had no discussion. I mean, they, and there was a lot of them that were basically, I won't say common sense, but they were, they were consensus, they were very much consensus items. And just to point out that Lisa's amendment to the resolution was, I think, a very important one, because we always talk about the cost of, of the Medicaid administration, you know, how much it costs us to, to get the paperwork, do all the filing. It's out of our pocket, and it cuts into the reimbursements we get.
Right.
And that resolution is basically saying, that's, that's a cost of it, that's a cost we should get reimbursed as well, because, you know, it is, it is all about the money we spend so the students can get their services. And if, if they support that, and if we're able to get that to pass, that's almost an inverse unfunded mandate. That's actually refunding a mandate, which would be great if we, if they could get that passed.
Yeah, it would be, and it was a good catch, Lisa. That was good thought on that, and congratulations on getting that amendment. Good for you. Well, good for all of us, really, because if that can bring about some action, that would be great. The one thing I did, I, I kind of jumped over because we were talking about Monroe County committee meetings. I want, I sent out an email. You probably haven't had a chance to see it, but I'm also on the, John, it's COAC, I guess, COAC, the Communications Outreach Advisory Committee, but every time I see that word, I say COAC in my head. But anyway, it's a committee, you know, another one of the Monroe County committees where the different districts come together. So there's a group working on, in this committee. And what we do is, we put together information sheets on topics that are of interest and of import to things that are going on, like ESSA and SEL, you know, mental health, those kinds of things. And then we gather the information and put together information sheets that we send out. Like, what I did today was sent out what we talked about for ESSA, so that all of you have, you know, an understanding of what, and everybody's talking about the same thing. Everybody has the same, it's, it's a consistent message. So when you are approached at your PTAs or, you know, at Wegmans or whatever, however that might affect you with, with the community, you've got the information. So I just wanted to share that what, some of the things we are working on, like I said, the ESSA, APR, the social-emotional learning, mental health, school safety, and a new one on the radar is upcoming teacher shortage. So, I mean, that's going to be a big problem, and we're going to be talking about it in this venue, and, and then information will be coming out as we go along in the year or so. That was what I did this week with that. All right. Did we cover everything then, do you think? No, no unfinished business, no new business? Want to hang for a while? Or how about this? How about this one? Can I have a motion and a second that the meeting be adjourned at 9:01 PM? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. Our next meeting is November 27th. And so, yeah, because of Thanksgiving, yeah. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.